Mike, you're kind of coming through twice.
Is there another mic on?
The mic is on. That might be a little better. You're getting it too, aren't you? The X?
Yeah. Is that better or worse?
Same.
Nothing changed.
I'll just switch to the hand mic. Maybe this one's...
Sorry.
Is this one better? Okay. The notice for the public hearing was published in the Daily Journal on June 9th, 2021, as well as on July 14th, and a copy of the public notice was mailed to property owners within 350 feet on June 9th. And the public hearing was scheduled for June 28th, but was declared continued at that time till today. In a total of 20, property owners were included in this mailing. As of publishing the staff report, no inquiries or public comments have been received. Copies of the application materials were sent to the City of Fergus Falls Engineering Department, the Building Official, and the Fire Department, and no staff comments from those departments were received. And under Minnesota statute and the City of Fergus Falls Municipal Code, variances are to be evaluated under the Practical Difficulties Test. Practical difficulties means that A) the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the zoning ordinance; B) the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner; and C) the variance, if granted, would not alter the essential character of the locality, and economic considerations alone do not constitute practical difficulties. Variances shall only be permitted when they are in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the ordinance, and when the variances are consistent with a comprehensive plan. The application states that a variance is necessary due to circumstances unique to the property that are that the lots are large, and a shed in the back one-third of the lot would be a great distance to run power and store snow removal equipment far from the driveway. The applicant owns an electric mower. Staff's proposed findings are shown on the screen. While staff concur that the proposed variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the on-one zoning district and would not alter the essential character of the locality, staff do not concur that the requested variance arises from circumstances that are unique to the property. The size of the lot is similar to others on the block and in the neighborhood, and denial of the variance would not deprive the property owner of the ability to construct and place a shed on the property. So with the proposed findings, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend denial of the variance. If the commission does not agree with any of the findings, the commission should look at whether there are conditions to help create a positive finding, or look at a denial finding and create a set of findings to support that denial. If the commission does approve a variance, the applicant would still need to obtain a building permit for the shed, and to ensure that building and fire codes are met particularly as it relates to the distance between the shed and the primary structure. This concludes staff's presentation, and I can answer any questions, and I know that the property owner is available as well. Thank you.
Any questions from the commission before we open the public hearing?
I have one. This is the same location as the old shed, right? The proposal is for the same location?
So it is flipped. Oops. So the yellow was the existing, and the red is the proposed.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? If not, thank you, and we will open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak, please come forward and state your name and address. You can try turning that mic around, and we'll just going to have to go with it, I think, so...
I did leave it turned.
Okay. You left yours on, turned it over there. Oh, okay, sorry.
I left the home mic on, so it should pick you up.
Is that fine? Can you hear me? My name is Neil Hogrud. I'm at 623 Woodland Drive, Fergus Falls. And we asked for variance on this shed. The shed was a poorly constructed shed that was tight to the house, and it was causing the siding to fall apart on the side of our house. So we had to have it removed to put new metal siding on the house. We then bought enough siding to make the shed match the house and pose not going any higher than the roofline of the house, so it wouldn't stand out. The reason we used the shed primarily was to store snow removal equipment and lawn equipment. And having it way in the back, if you have to snowblow the driveway, you're going to have to take it all the way to the front, to the driveway, to use to clear the driveway off. So that's what the purpose of moving the shed. We also turned it because then it would face straight forward. Before, the shed was to the side yard, and it wasn't very easily accessible, and it was, like I said, tight to the siding. So turning it would allow it to, you could drive the riding lawnmower right in, and it's also electric riding lawnmowers, so we'd need electrical power to keep it charged in the winter, so the batteries don't die. And we bought the house with the functionality of having that shed right there, and the siding falling apart made it, so we had to remove it. We didn't see that it was going to be a problem to replace it.
Thank you. We might call you up if we have questions for you, or is there anyone else that would like to speak during the public hearing? Okay. Are there any questions from the commission for the homeowners? I think you snuck in a little during, I think the staff position for, he's asking if the staff position for denial was because it's not an undue hardship. Is that accurate? Just so we have everybody on the same page up here.
Yeah, I'll just go to the mic. Correct. So with the Practical Difficulties Test, it's basically three components, and one of the components is that it's circumstances that are unique to the property that were not created by the landowner. And so the reason listed in the application was the size of the lots.
There are no other comments during the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Is there anything else you wanted to add? Come on up. If you could just state your name and your address.
Allison Hogrud, 623 Woodland Drive. I just wanted to add that in the back of our lot, which isn't on the drawing, we also have a septic mound system, a garden, and an old drain filled system, or old drain filled from prior to our ownership. So placing a shed in that back of our lot is difficult because of the existing and several large oak trees. So having space for a lot in the back would be difficult.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? If not, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I guess, I have a problem denying this when there was already a shed there, and it obviously got approved at some point for some reason. I think the information about whatever, what else is in the backyard, it would have been nice if that would have been in the application. I know there may be some things on the map, too, but I guess I am leaning towards approving the variance.
Just one thing. They were annexed in, and so it was built before the annexation. And so the township has a whole different rules. And so I think that we should look back in these annexations for Woodland Heights. They had so many years to follow the township rules, and I think that's still in place. You wouldn't know anything about that, I don't think.
So I did consult our city attorney when I first reviewed this application on the nonconformity and the fact that it was annexed in. And according to the city attorney, due to the transfer of ownership, that nonconformity would no longer apply.
Could we, as a commission, choose that the location is a hardship? I mean, can we go to that direction? Is that kind of where you're going with things, Kelsey? So do we have a motion one way or another on this, or other discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the variance, as long as the visual effect, the siding, is matching of the structure.
Do we need to have a proposed finding for that, to add it to that motion, or not?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So do we have a reason for not an undue hardship that you want to add to your motion?
On the grounds that there would be undue hardship to the homeowner to place the structure elsewhere in the yard due to existing utilities and such.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. It will get forwarded to, it's not, our decision isn't final, so it'll go to the city council, so you guys know the next steps. We will, you're welcome. We will move on to our next public hearing, which is Molly Nelson, a conditional use permit to allow for ground floor apartment in the B3 zone, and presentation on that, please.
Thank you. And this is for a conditional use permit to allow for the ground floor apartment requested by Molly Nelson at 214 East Crivore Avenue, and the property owner is with us today. And shown on the screen is 2018 aerial imagery of the parcel. And as stated, the property is owned B3, General Business District, and there is R4 Multiple Family Residence, which is located across the street east of Woodford. And a conditional use permit is being requested since multiple dwellings and apartments are permitted in a B3 district, but they must be located on the second floor or above. Ground floor units require a conditional use permit, and the building at 214 East Crivore is only one story. The applicant currently operates a business, Poppy Seed Massage, at this location. And this image is provided by the applicant and is a sketch of the proposed interior division of the building. So the west side that you see here would be converted into a personal living space for the property owner, with the east side remaining the business side. And this location is located within the downtown parking exemption, part of our zoning code. I know that that may be a question that the commission and the public has with regard to this conversion of some of this space into a living space. And in the application, the property owner also mentions that she regularly parks on the street during the day to operate her business as well. The notice for the public hearing was published in the Daily Journal on July 14th, and a copy of this public notice was mailed to property owners within 350 feet on July 14th. This included a total of 20 property owners, and it was also sent to the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Hydrologists, and shared internally with the Building Official, Engineering, and Fire Department, and no staff comments have been received. And there also have been no public inquiries or comments received as well. Staff's findings are proposed on the screen. They're a little bit hard to read in that font. Essentially, just finding that due to the fact that the changes are going to be internal to the property, there is some existing residential in this neighborhood with some multiple family residences and apartments to the north and to the east, that staff are proposing to the commission to recommend approval of this conditional use permit, just with the following condition, that any and all fire code and building code regulations pertaining to the interior split of the building are followed. If the planning commission does not agree with any of the findings, the commission can of course look if there are conditions to help create a positive finding, or look at a denial finding and create a set of findings to support that denial. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions. And as I mentioned, the property owner is here as well.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you. We'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. You don't have to. Okay.
She summed it up beautifully. I'd like, if you have any questions, though.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the property owner?
Are you the owner, or?
I am the owner.
Can you step up to the mic, sorry, and just state your name and address?
Molly Nelson. My home address is 114 West Lincoln, and my business address where I own...
In the description, it was noted that you park on the street during business hours. Are you planning to park in a different location at night, or stay on the street?
I would stay on the street because there isn't like a driveway into it. There's usually ample street parking. It's kind of off, off-street in a way, and I've never had any trouble parking there during the day. I think it would be more of an issue if I had like a family, but I have, it's just me, and I have one vehicle. I'm parked there like all day, every day for work. So I'm just hoping that that would maybe be okay for me, just to continue parking on the street.
It would seem to me if it doesn't interfere with traffic during the day, it shouldn't at night, would that?
Right. And then, would you have a plan for snow removal if, for things like that, for around your vehicle?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, if there's no other comments, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Is there any discussion on this? If not, a motion to approve or deny?
So...
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a, a motion for which one? I said to approve or deny?
Approve.
Perfect. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, and this will also go to city council. And then we will move on to the next staff presentation on the Ellen Sour Drager variance, accessory building in the side yard at a zero-foot setback at 107 East Oriole Drive.
It would help if I go the right direction.
All right. And this request is by Ellen Sour Drager for a variance to construct an accessory building, a 20 by 16 shed in the side yard at a proposed zero-foot setback at 107 East Oriole Drive. And shown on the screen is 2018 aerial imagery of the parcel, highlighted in blue. And the property is located in an R2 one-and-two family residence district. A variance is requested because the current accessory building section of the ordinance states that a detached accessory building shall not be located in any required front or side yard. The proposed shed size and placement are shown on your screen. The one on the left was provided by the applicant, and the second one was created in GIS using two-scale with the proposed 20 by 16 structure and its placement. And the proposed placement of the shed has it beginning sort of near the south fence line of the property here, and the 16 feet would essentially take it to the edge of the property line. The shed itself would not exceed the visual setback of either the subject property or the neighboring property to the west at 104 West Oriole Drive. And according to the applicant, the existing place structure would move closer to the front of the house. And the public notice for this hearing was published in the Daily Journal on July 14th, with a copy of the public notice mailed to property owners within 350 feet on July 14th. A total of 23 property owners were included in that mailing, and this notice as well was also sent to the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. As of publishing the staff report, no public inquiries or comments have been received. Copies of the application materials were also sent to the City of Fergus Falls Engineering Department, Building Official, and Fire Department, and no staff comments were received. And under the Minnesota statute and City of Fergus Municipal Code, as we just discussed, variances are to be evaluated under that Practical Difficulties Test. So in this example, with this property owner, I'm going to go back to the, with the, with the pie lot, essentially there is two side yard lines, and the rear yard in these cases, we essentially just consider fenced-in property. And so with the required placement of being in the rear one-third of the back lot, you can see that that's essentially occupied by the pool. And being on this curve as well, there really isn't any other placement for this shed, since this is also counting as a front lot in this situation. So this were the reasons that were given for the circumstances that are unique to the property that were not caused by the homeowner. With that in mind, the staff's proposed findings are shown on the screen, which states here the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances that were unique to the property, which is stating the pie-shaped lot leaving not much of the buildable area for the structure, as well as the variance would not alter the essential nature of the locality, since it would be sort of within the sightline here of the front house setback to the west and the front setback of the home on the subject property. With those proposed findings, the staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of the variance with the following conditions, that the structure will be painted to match the primary structure's facade, and must abide by all building code regulations pertaining to the construction of the accessory building. If the commission does not agree with these findings, the commission can look at if there's other conditions to help create a positive finding, or look at a denial finding and create a set of findings to support that denial. This concludes staff's presentation. I can answer any questions, and I believe the property owner is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? If not, we'll open the public hearing. And if you'd like to speak, please feel free to step forward and state your name and address. Do we have any questions for the property owner?
The owner of the property around that bend that this proposed shed is actually going to be sitting right on the property line, is that...
You've had no comments, or no?
No.
And they were notified, obviously.
Yep, no comments were received, and they would have been within the 350-foot mailing.
Okay, if no one wants to speak, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion or a motion.
I'll make the motion. We approve the building?
We have a motion by Scott. Do we have a second? No second on this one? We need a second if we're going to vote. We have no one that would like to second this one? I can second, can I, I think I can second it. I'm voting. I'll second it for purposes of moving on. Any other discussion? Okay, if not...
Do you, does anybody know when that structure, when that building was, was first constructed? Do you know when that was built?
The home? Are you referring to the home?
Yeah.
Do you want to come up as a property owner? Or we not have the property? I thought you said the property owner was here.
Thought I saw on the list, but...
That would make sense why no one's coming up.
Yeah, it would.
But you've had no objections from anybody? Okay.
We can certainly access our internal system to see when here it was built.
It's more just curiosity. It's like, how did that get approved to begin with? It's sitting right on the property line on one end. That would never pass, no.
I think some things, at some point in history, just kind of happened. That's my gut, is that we have more accountability now than maybe we did in the past.
Is the commissioner, are you referring to, to this?
Yeah.
Section? Okay. So this is an R2 property. I'm not sure about the changes that may have happened throughout the years. This is considered a side lot line. There is a five-foot setback required from a side lot line in an R2 zoning district. So it would not surprise me if this was...
Definitely not any more than five.
No, and we've got to be, we've got to keep in mind, we might be looking at soft invasion overhang there, and it's a ground, it's a ground five feet, is my understanding.
Correct.
And so we could have, maybe they could have an 18-inch overhang by chance, too.
I guess we can only go by what we have right now, and if the current property owner on that, the one around the corner, doesn't object to it, if they sell it and the people that buy it do object to it, I guess they have the choice of not buying it, so...
So we have a...
1893 it was built.
We've got the sleuth here. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion, or we'll call for the question? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So motion does pass. Okay, we're good. We will move on to number, or letter D, Campus Development Group, LLP. Prairie View Development is the applicant for rezoning Campus Edition from R1 to R4, lots 1 through 7, and lot 8.
So the next three cases all involve the same project. It's a proposed replat of Campus Edition into Campus Vista Estates. The preliminary plat relies on the rezoning request and the variance request. So the rezoning case will be heard first, followed by the variance, and then concluding with the preliminary plat. So as stated, this is a request by Prairie View Development, the builder and developer, on behalf of the property owner, Campus Development Group, LLP, to rezone the lots within the current Campus Edition. So this zoning request has two parts. One involves rezoning from R1, which is one-family residence district, to R4, multiple-family residence district. So that involves the current lots 1 through 7, and the lot 8, except for the south 20 feet on the block 1 of Campus Edition. And the second piece of the rezoning request is from R1, that's one-family residence, to R2, which is the two-family, 1-2 family residence district, and that includes the remaining platted area. So the remainder of block 1, and then all of blocks 2 and block 3 in Campus Edition, as well as the affected adjoining halves of rights of way. So this is a 2018 aerial image of the area that's inclusive of all of the requests, including the rezoning. And then this is the current zoning of the property. We'll walk through this a little bit more in-depth in a couple of slides, but the yellow here is that R1, one-family residence district. The lime green is RA, Residential Agriculture, which is also our base zoning district. We also have a little bit of a lighter yellow color, R2, which is the 1-2 family residence district, and a little bit of orange, R4, and the B3 is sort of this pinkish color here, which is the General Business District. So just as a reminder, this area was platted in 2016 and recorded in 2018 as Campus Edition to the City of Fergus Falls. And in its entirety at that time, it was owned on a one, one-family residence district. So the image on the left here is overlaying the rezoning request onto the lots as they currently exist. And the image on the right is the zoning districts that would apply on the proposed preliminary replat of this addition. So the proposed use of the R4 zone, which is orange according to our color scheme, and the sort of dark purple on the one provided by the applicant, is a construction of single-story, multiple-unit buildings. And the proposed use of the R2 zone, which is this light green color around here, and doesn't really show up unfortunately on this screen here, but basically... doesn't really show up unfortunately on this screen here, but basically where it looks kind of white, the proposed use there is construction of single-story twin homes or semi-detached homes. With rezoning requests, the planning commission needs to review the application as if any R2 or R4 use would be placed there, since rezones are not specific and no conditions can be made. And so instead, the commission needs to review if the zones would be compatible to the area. So as context, the applicant provided some renderings for the concept. This is a front and rear elevation of the proposed attached single-story buildings. And this would be for two five-plexes under the current proposal, and then also the twin homes. So there would be a total of 12 dwelling units on the R4 property. And under the current proposal, those would be rental. And this is the location on the preliminary plat that we'll see in a couple of minutes, just as a concept. And these are renderings provided by the applicant for the front and rear elevations for the proposed R2 properties, which are the twin homes, as well as 3D renderings. So the proposed area to be rezoned to R4... I'm just gonna... Which is this area here. It has B3 located to the northwest, and this zoning district is used... That's my understanding that historically, when this area was looking at being redeveloped, there wanted to be some flexibilities for a mixed-use potential. And under our zoning code, that B3 zoning district is really the only way to do that. The current use of the properties is multiple-family residences, with the redevelopment of some of the Kirkbride buildings. And the remainder of the Kirkbride campus is also still currently zoned B3. And there is also some R4 that is located essentially kitty-corner here, from where the proposed Lot 1 rezoning would be. And the current uses that are on that property is are essentially the single-story twin homes. As you go a little bit further north, there is some use of a two-story eight-plex, and it looked like there may be a two-story four-plex as well as you go a little bit further up Park Street. To the north here, with the RA zoning, that is the location of the Minnesota Veterans So that's the area and the zoning analysis for the proposed R4 zoning. The proposed area to be rezoned to R2, which is essentially the remainder of this box here, so it would have this proposed R4 to the north here, but then there is also this existing R2 zoning district just to the northeast here, which also consists of some single-family... Single-story twin homes. And then this R1 district here has single-family detached homes, and there are about three single-family homes just to the south. And to the rest here is land that is still owned by Campus Development Group as part of this project area, and this is also parkland owned by the City of Fergus Falls. The notice for the public hearing was published in the Daily Journal on July 14, and a copy of this public notice was mailed to property owners within 350 feet on July 14. And this included a total of 54 property owners that were included in the mailing. As of publishing the staff report, the... There were no public comments or inquiries received. Since the staff reports were published, there has been one public inquiry, as well as one phone call of opposition to the project in general. So the individual making the public inquiry was wondering about the impacts to the property owner, about utility installation, and property owner's taxes. And the phone call of opposition was from Lois Wilmer, who was located at 1520 North Park Lane, and she noted concerns about the increase in traffic, noise, and reducing the view of open space. And she was also wondering about the future parking for Summerfest, and whether or not the housing would be low-income housing. And I see that the PowerPoint didn't get saved, but there were no subsequent comments prior to walking down here at 5:00 PM. And information on the rezoning request was shared internally with the building official, engineering, and fire department, and no comments were received. Staff's proposed findings are shown on the screen, essentially walking through the rezoning analysis that we just did, that the property to be rezoned, R4, has multiple-family uses to the northwest, as well as some R4 districts that it is adjacent to. And the R2 zoning is also present to the northeast across Park Street, and that the respective parcel sizes would accommodate the proposed development. With these proposed findings, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of the rezoning. And if the commission does not agree with any of the findings, the commission should look at a denial finding and create a set of findings to support denial. This concludes staff's presentations. I can answer any questions that you may have, and the applicant and the engineering team are available as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Staff. If not, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant or their representatives? Okay. That will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
The actual address is Park Street. I'm not clear as to what the street axis is for that.
Sure. So some of the proposed lots, both in the original development proposal and the proposed proposal, will be addressed on Park Street. Everything else is on the platted and dedicated but not built Campus Drive. So if you try and put the addresses that these have currently been given into Google, it just can't give you anything. So this is the proposed Campus Drive. It was platted and dedicated as part of Campus Edition. And as we'll see in the proposed preliminary plat, there are no changes to Campus Drive. So these lots here would be addressed on Campus Drive, and these lots here are addressed on Campus Drive, and these are Park Street.
And just to the northwest there, I'm guessing, that direction? What are those addresses, or where are those?
I believe that's Patterson Loop for those apartments, if I'm not mistaken.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? If not, do we have a motion to move forward with this?
I move to approve.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vern. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. We will move on to the next Campus Development item, which is the variance for reduced rear yard setback in the R2 zone by two feet for property located in Campus Edition, lots 2 through 5, and lots 1 through 4 in block 2, and 1 through 7.
All right. Thank you, Chair. So as the Chair stated, this is a variance request for the R2 zone. So since the planning commission just recommended the approval of the rezoning request, it makes sense to continue with these hearings as well, and make those recommendations to city council as well. So this... These variances, we're just discussing these in terms of the proposed new lots in the Campus View Estates addition, and those would be the ones that are going to be zoned R2. And so shown on the screen, again, as a reminder, is the aerial view. The current lot lines are shown in black, and I've done a rough approximation in a red highlight of the lots that the proposed variance would apply to in the preliminary plat that we'll be discussing in a moment. So these properties are currently zoned R1, but the planning commission is recommending the rezoning to R2 for these lots. A variance is requested because the setback requirements for an R2 lot state that the rear yard requires a setback of buildings of not less than 20% of the depth of the lot. The depth of the proposed lots is 120 feet for the lots that are included in the variance request. The applicant states that the lots cannot be made wider due to the required onsite stormwater and the Campus Drive right-of-way, and that sufficient buffering and open space between the properties is present with the Outlet B stormwater area. So this is Outlet B, which has been reserved for stormwater retention and drainage of these lots. So this is the lots that are proposed under the preliminary plat, and highlighted are the two feet of encroachment of the twin homes sunroom in the rear of the property. So that would be lots 2, 3, 4, and 5 in block 1, 1 through 4 in block 2, and all the lots in block 3 that have the twin homes. The notice for the public hearing was published in the Daily Journal on July 14, and a copy of the notice was mailed to property owners within 350 feet on July 14 as well. This also included the 54 property owners with... Who received the rezoning mailing as well. As of publishing the staff report, there were no inquiries or public comments that were received. And I have just copied and pasted the inquiries that were made to this project in general, although they did not necessarily specifically state anything about the variance request itself. So that was the individual property owner who was inquiring about the effects of utility installation and taxes, and Lois Wilmer as well, with her concerns about increases in traffic, noise, and reducing the views of open space. And copies of the application materials were also sent internally to the City of Fergus Falls Engineering Department, Building Official, and Fire Department, and no staff comments were received, and no additional public comments were received prior to 5:00 PM. So understood... Under Minnesota statute and the City of Fergus Falls municipal code, variances are to be evaluated, as we've established today, under the practical difficulties test, which means that the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the zoning ordinance, the plight of the landowner is due to the circumstances unique to the property that were not created by the landowner, and that the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality, and economic considerations alone do not constitute practical difficulties. Variances shall only be permitted when they are in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the ordinance, and when the variances are consistent with the comprehensive plan. And so while staff concur that the proposed variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the R2 zoning district, and it will not alter the essential character of the locality, staff do not concur that the requested variance arises from circumstances that are unique to the property. So as we discussed engineering, this Campus Drive... This Campus Drive was platted and dedicated to the city in the original development plat. Normally, our right-of-way dedication is 75 feet. Campus Drive is dedicated at 66 feet, and there are no changes proposed to that. So sort of that... Allowing that reduction both in the original plan and this plan, you know, helped to get these lots to that 120 minimum depth for that R1 and R2 zoning district that is being proposed. And the... Those current lot depths, that 120 feet, is the minimum requirement of the zoning ordinance, so that condition is met. And so staff suggests that the strict application of the R2 zoning district standards to provide 20% of the rear lot, as based on the depth of the lot, does not create a set of practical difficulties for the applicant. And so with those proposed findings, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend denial of the variance. If the commission does not agree with any of the findings, the commission could look at whether there's conditions to help create a positive finding, or look at the denial finding and create a set of different findings to support denial. This concludes staff's presentation, and I can answer any questions, and the applicant is also here as well, as we've stated. Thank you.
Is it... Did you say it was for a sunroom? That's what's going over? So it's just a little part of the structure? It's not the entire structure? Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'm just making sure I understood it correctly.
Yep. And I'm trying to... Claire, could you maybe get me back to the folder?
Can you see on the map what the dimension, like the width of... It's two feet over, I understand that, but what is the width of that space compared to the width of the lot that's going to be over?
The applicant did provide some construction drawings with it. Also, Claire, I'm on like the folder for that. Yeah, I just... I can't get the... Yep. Thanks.
I'm just wondering if we're talking like 2 by 12, or what we're talking here?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Getting... I'm 2 by 12? Okay. That's about what it looked like. Okay. So we're talking 2 by 12 going over, so basically 24 square feet per lot? And what is the overall width of the lots approximately?
They vary. It's more or less... The width is about 100 feet, and the depth is about 120 feet.
Right. Okay.
So... But I am still too zoomed in here. So this would be essentially two feet of this piece of the building.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Or Karen?
Would that be possible just to truncate those wings and keep it way on the lower ends?
Maybe that's a question for the applicant on usability once that happens? That might be more of an applicant question? Okay. With that, then, we'll open the public hearing. Thank you for your presentation. If you'd like to speak, if you want to state your name, your address, and your... You're the owner, or the relationship to the applicant.
Thank you. I'm Mike Fletchall with Interstate Engineering, 116 East Washington. We're the engineering firm that's representing the applicant. As you asked, it is just a 24-square-foot area for each unit. As far as the setback, the percentage, it would be a difference of, rather than the required 20% of the rear yard, it's eight... Comes out to 18.3%, so it's pretty close. The applicant does have building plans, you know, obviously, for this size and this layout, and they've approved the... Approved salary, so similar units in town here, so...
If the lot size, or if that room size were to change, what is the dimension of the room right now for use of... I mean, it might be a usability issue for the space, too.
Correct. Yeah, right now it's 12 by 12.
Do we have any other questions for Mike?
So the... We understand it is the width of the street was truncated to fit... To make this a buildable lot, now it's still not big enough to do the plans?
There were some... Correct. There were some unique circumstances on this plat, on the previous plat. The city required a rather large stormwater pond be constructed on there, so it was a kind of a unique circumstance for the property at that time, and they gave a little on that, on the right-of-way width of nine feet from the 66 to 75.
Any other questions for Mike? And these are similar to the layout that you guys just did on Cascade, I would assume?
Identical, yeah.
And those all sold relatively quickly, I think? Yeah. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Anyone else that would like to speak?
Sure. Hi, I'm Donovan Rogness. I'm one of the developers. Address is 925 Clearview Court. We're asking for that additional two feet because we feel like that room is already at a kind of a small size the way it is. As was spoken, we did 10 of these units last year, and they all sold, and that was probably the favorite room in the entire house by the buyers. And we feel that shrinking it down to 10 feet would harm the overall look and feel of the room. If I felt like 10 by 12 was adequate, I wouldn't have applied for two feet. One thing I'd like to consider is that it's a brand-new development. There's no neighbors or anything at this point that would be affected by this. Everyone would be under the same situation, so it kind of makes sense if we can get this variance to go, then everyone's going to be in the same boat. There's no neighbor that's currently going to be affected by going an extra two feet. Most of the lots do have that big drainage ditch in between them, and so there's going to be additional 60 feet of buffer between them. And then the other lots have a lot of open space behind them as well. So the lots are small, but there's still lots of space between owners, so.
To look at, one of the requirements we have that you've heard tonight is the undue hardship. Is there any way to flop that room? And so it could be maybe wider and not a 12 by 12 square, or are you, are you pretty stuck with how tight things are, that this is kind of the only option to make this a usable space?
I would, I kind of like to say that this is the option, just because we've proven it. We don't want to reinvent a wheel for something that has been sold, and people have appreciated, and we kind of know what we have. Again, because there's nobody being affected by it currently, everyone will be in the same playing field, that we just assume, keep our same design, be a lot better for function, and so.
Any other questions?
What would be the space left between the, the building then and the, the road right-of-way, I believe?
You mean the back of the property line?
Property.
Do you know what that is, Mike?
I'm not sure I understand.
From, with a two-feet overhang, or the two-feet extra be from there to the rear lot line? What is the distance from the edge of the structure to the rear lot line? Is that what you're asking, Vern?
Yeah, it would go from 24 feet to 22 feet.
So you still have 23, 23 feet between the, okay.
Yes, there's still 22 feet from the back of the sunroom and the, and the rear property line.
And that rear property line is not to the edge of the road? It's to the road right-of-way, is that correct?
Over.
Or to the, no road there, sorry. Yeah, no road there, right.
Correct, it'd be to the back property line, and that's what we're talking about, the buffer of other space in there, yep.
They all face.
They all face the same.
Back to each other, and that, the city required that 60-foot drainage or whatever it is. So that's why it's, it looks funny, it looks like there's a road there, but it's not, it's just a drainage. They're going to be taking care of the property, there's going to be mowing the grass anyway, so.
Correct.
In essence, it's going to look like one big backyard when you look down the middle of the road. Is that, I mean, that's, we're understanding this correctly?
Correct.
So though, though in essence, between the houses be the drainage plus two 22-foot backyards?
Yeah, I see that now. I was thinking that was the proposed road right-of-way there.
Any other questions for Mr. Rogness or Mike? If not, we'll close the public hearing unless there's anything you'd like to add. Bring it back to the commission. Comments, discussion, thoughts, emotion?
I just know I drive by the ones on Cascade, and they're a nice place. They did a nice job on those, and I see them every day, and if this is going to be the same thing, that'd be a great addition to the neighborhood, so I'll make a motion to approve it.
And what are the findings for hard, meeting the undue hardship in your motion?
Oh, man.
And we talked a little bit about usability.
Hardship is from the city making them put a 60-foot piece back to, I mean, that's the hardship. I mean, it's like.
Okay, so due to the hardship of the drainage ditch that was required?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second for that motion?
What was the motion again?
We have a motion to approve, and the hardship being stated for one of our proposed findings is the city-mandated drainage ditch. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's just a drainage swale. It's not going to be a ditch. It's going to be, what, a foot and a half drop in it? It's going to drain one way or the other? Is that how it's going to work, or what's it going to look like, Mike?
It's more pond.
It's going to be a pond? Okay. A retention pond? Okay.
So we have an understanding of the motion on the table?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Vern has a second? Any other discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that'll go to City Council. We'll do campus view number three. This is the replat of campus addition, preliminary plat.
All right, so now that we have both the rezoning request and the variance request, preliminary recommending approval to the City Council. This is a request by Prairie View Development on behalf of the property owner for the preliminary plat approval of Campus View Estates Addition, which is a replat of that Campus Addition. And as submitted, this plat is for a 19-lot, three-block subdivision. And this is still the area that we are located in. It's the plat area highlighted in black. The total plat area is 9.1 acres, and it remains undeveloped land since the time of this imagery. The property is currently zoned R1, one-family residence district, but the surrounding zoning varies as we sort of walked through with that rezoning analysis. And this is the proposed rezoning that the planning commission is making the recommendation to City Council to approve, with R4 being the multiple-family lot, and these lots being the single-family attached twin homes. This map was included on the plat and is just the project location vicinity map, so it's essentially just south of Kirkbride, the RTC here. And it's, the plat area itself is roughly located between Union Avenue on the west, Park Street on the east, and then the Patterson Loop to the north, northwest. I'm going to maybe just zoom out here to the submission for the plat. It's not coming up very well. So this is just a little bit clearer image here of the proposed plat. So you'll just see the topographic lines sort of in these dashed lines. And as you sort of look at the, the buildings themselves, these dashed interior lines are just the setbacks that are required by the ordinance. So as we've discussed today, this northwest area here is going to become one large lot, Lot 1, Block 1, and that will have the proposed, it's currently two five-plexes and then a twin home for a total of 12 dwelling units. Outlet A would remain undeveloped. The proposals are possibly for a community garden or something to that effect. And Outlet B is that stormwater retention that was mentioned just a few minutes ago as well. And remainder of the plat area here would be those twin home units. So hopefully that's a little bit clearer than these slides here. And for the proposed 12 rental units, that mix of one-story attached and semi-detached homes, the development is currently proposed, does meet the R4 district zoning standards, including the building setback requirements, the lot dimensional standards such as lot area, lot size, and lot coverage, as well as parking requirements. So you saw in those elevation drawings for both the R4 attached units and the twin homes, that those will come with an attached two-stall garage. And the proposed twin home units on the remainder of the plat area are proposed to be zoned R2, and this is currently 15 months. Those would require a variance for the rear yard setback, which the planning commission just recommended approval to the City Council on. Otherwise, the development as proposed would meet all other building setback requirements for the R2 district, as well as the lot dimensional standards and parking requirements for an R2 twin home property. So just like the other cases that were before you for this today, the notice for the public hearing was published in the Daily Journal on July 14th, and property owners were mailed the public notice that same day as well, any longer than 350 feet. This included a total of 54 total mailings. And as of publishing the staff report, no inquiries or comments have been received. But again, as previously mentioned, there was one telephone inquiry and one phone call of opposition to the project, which we've discussed, and I just summarized here on the slide again. And copies of the application materials were sent to the City of Fergus Falls Engineering Department, Building Official, and Fire Department. And those comments are summarized in the staff report. Broadly speaking, engineering has requested that the applicant make technical corrections to the plat so that it would include the following, such as more detailed information about the location and size of the utilities, as well as the proposed connection points for sanitary sewer and the water mains, illustrating some things on Campus Drive, such as labeling the turning radius of curb and gutter and streetwoods, and showing all existing easements. And the development review team also noted that there are existing utility easements on the current platted lots from Campus Addition that need to be vacated. And so that's a process that can kind of run concurrently with this preliminary and eventual final plat approval process. And a utility plan was also requested. And another note that was both from staff as well as the bond attorney, the applicant is going to be pursuing TIF funds for the utility work and installation of Campus Drive, that since the twin homes that are on, essentially the blocks 2 and blocks 3, and this back end of Lot 1 are going to be sold, the applicant was proposing in the application to just do a parcel split after construction. But since these will be essentially homeownership units, and we know that now, and it's going to make things just much cleaner and easier for the bond attorney for that TIF application process, as well as for just, just being an accurate plat. So the applicant has received these comments. I also know that there was some request from the engineering department looking into the possible stormwater. I know that the applicant has provided some updated numbers to engineering to justify that that Outlet B was a sufficiently-sized stormwater pond for the proposed new development, as well as a stormwater pond maintenance agreement. As we discussed, those homeowners will be responsible for maintaining some of that. And so I know that the applicant has been working with providing some of those updated materials that just unfortunately weren't able to be reviewed in time for this meeting, but the applicant is working to address the comments that have been provided by staff and other departments. So with that, staff's proposed findings are shown on the screen, indicating to recommend support, supporting the proposed preliminary plat. And these are the conditions that are listed for the preliminary plat. They're listed in the staff report, essentially just what we walked through, most of engineering's comments, vacating those existing utility easements from the previous campus addition, ensuring that the final plat has the lot split, so that each twin home unit would be in its own separate lot, illustrating all utility easements for those new twin home lots. The current plat that you've seen has the setback lines, but engineering likes a copy where they can specifically see the easements with utilities. Also, they add to the plat the information that was requested by the engineering department, and amending that existing stormwater permit for the Campus Addition and making any necessary changes, entering into that stormwater pond maintenance agreement. And then number seven would no longer be applicable, since the planning commission has recommended approval of that variance request to City Commission. So with that, that is the staff presentation for the preliminary plat. I'll just leave the recommended conditions on the screen for the commissioners. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission?
So the TIF financing will be considered in a separate by the City Council?
Correct, yep.
Okay, if not, thank you for your presentation, and we will open the public hearing.
Good evening. I'm Alex Schwartzoff. I'm with Interstate Engineering. We're representing the developer. I just want to clarify a couple of things on the conditions. Number five, there is no existing stormwater permit. The permit was never filed for because there was never any development done. And then, but the, the outlot will be, the size of the pond will be redesigned then at the time of development to account for the changes in the development. And then number six, I believe it's the developer's intention to, to maintain ownership of that stormwater pond, so I don't know that an agreement with the city would be required. There will be some sort of homeowners agreement as to how that is maintained.
Any questions for the applicant, or their representatives from the commission? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Karen, do you have any comments on the couple of things on five and six that were just brought up that you'd like us to be aware of?
Sure. I haven't had a chance to coordinate with engineering. The chief city engineer was out sick today, so I, you know, this definitely is engineering's turf and territory, so I would hesitate to speak as, as to those conditions. You know, the planning commission could always reword it that they would just be, you know, addressed in some way, even if the language is, you know, perhaps not those exact same words, just so that those concerns of engineering are, are met, since they haven't had a chance to review those materials yet.
Okay. Thank you. Let's, any discussion here, or a motion, or how would the commission like to move forward?
I would move to approve with the staff recommended conditions, noting that conditions five and six would be if applicable, and that seven be taken out.
Okay. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that'll go on to City Council. Thank you guys for coming tonight.
Thank you.
We will move on. That is the last of the six. And so next, we'll move on to new business, and we have the regional, I guess maybe we should ask, we have a couple of other people here waiting. Should we flop the order of this, just for sake of time management and respect toward these people? Are we all okay with that? Okay, so we're going to move on to the proposed group housing unit.
Thank you. So attached in your packet was a memo concerning the proposed group housing use. So essentially, the purpose of this memo, and just letting the proposed community organization talk about their proposed use a little bit, is to essentially, staff is requesting authorization from the planning commission to research this topic a little bit more, and propose a zoning text ordinance update to accommodate this use. So very briefly, the community organization Welcome House is looking to purchase and own. So, very briefly, the community organization Welcome House is looking to purchase an R1 one-family residence district zone property, and operate transitional housing, so essentially short-term rentals to pregnant women, some who may have, already have children. So, it would be one single-family home with a shared kitchen and bathroom, with the individual rooms rented out. The issue with our zoning code is that a single-family dwelling is defined essentially as a sort of three categories, so it's either you're an individual, you're two or more people who are related by blood or marriage, or it's a group of not more than five unrelated persons. So, basically, the way that they're proposing to use this property would have more than five unrelated individuals living at the property. So, there is a stipulation, both in Minnesota statute, as well as the city zoning ordinance, that allows for certain state-licensed residential care facilities to be considered a permitted single-family use in certain situations, but that this proposed use and the organization itself does not meet these requirements. And so, the thinking internally is that since these group-living situations are permitted in other situations, how can we sort of make that similar in this case, while ensuring that community members would be able to comment on any concerns, such as parking or things of that nature? So, with that, I can answer any questions, but I know that the representatives of the organization were hoping to address the commission for a few minutes as well.
So, I have one question. Is this something we can't do by a conditional use permit?
Correct. There's no option for a conditional use permit.
Or a variance.
Right. So, the variance, it's essentially at that point a use variance, which isn't permitted in Minnesota.
I guess my concern, just knowing that, is the process to change our ordinances, time being of the essence in real estate transactions, this is a tricky one, so how to make this work in a way? I guess that's just, without a lot of knowledge, that's a hard thing to do when there's a property that's on the market.
And city staff have stressed that to the organization that is looking to purchase this property.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? If not, should we let them speak? Is that what you're thinking?
Okay.
If you could just state your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Cora Wickstrom, 1618 Minahuta Drive, Fergus Falls, and I'm on the board at the Welcome House. So, we have a really, really exciting project here in front of us, for transitional housing space, that the Welcome House, this is years in the coming that we've been wanting to do this. And so, this piece of property that we have found is kind of an ideal piece of property that can be refurbished to fit the needs of what we have seen, which what we want to do is, there's a lot of single mothers, there's a lot of women, and they don't have a place to go. They're kind of in between trying to get out of a tricky situation, and they can't just go forward and get the housing that they need, because there's skills that they need to learn, and there's other things. So, the Welcome House has this little transitional housing piece, and we plan to work with a lot of different organizations. So, with all that said, I just wanted to, just to, well, just to let you know, we are not going to be a rental. That's not what we are, okay? We are hoping that the people who are staying there, there will be some sort of pay coming in, whether it be from the government, from a certain type of program that they're in, or maybe there would be a sliding scale income that they could pay the Welcome House. But we're not charging like X amount of dollars every month for them to stay there, okay? And the amount of time that they would be there, we would hope that it would be about a six-month timeframe, but it could be different, right? And we are, just to make sure you know, we are not a care facility. We are there to kind of step in and help these people with things that they need, but we are not there to doctor them, we are not there to like, take care of things that way. So, I guess our biggest dilemma right now is the time thing that you mentioned. And we did put a purchase agreement in on, was it May 3rd? May 3rd? Okay. So, we have already asked for an extension for a month, and so now, that puts us into September 4th. And we have, we have been working really hard, and I know that we've been meeting with the city, we've been meeting with other organizations to try and get this to move along. But the timeframe that we're looking at, as far as we've been told, is I believe it's not until the end of October, November. If everything goes according to plan, we would not be even able to start with the permits that we need to like, apply for until the end of October, beginning of November. So, unfortunately, we have come to a dilemma. And so, we are here to ask for your help as to how, what we can do. We can expect the Children's Corner to hang on to this property just for us, and we do not feel good about going forward with the purchase agreement if it's not something that's doable, because this is money from people from donations, so it's not just my own money, it's, so, that's our dilemma. So, I don't know if anyone...
Okay. I just have a question. I don't know when, the first house, the house that I came home when I was born in, next door had a women's crisis center on Vasa Avenue. Very similar, not paying rent. I don't know, I think there is still a crisis center somewhere in town, but I think it's an undisclosed location. How do places like that, do they fall under 501(c)(3), and so they're allowable, or how is that functioning? And how can that be allowed somewhere, or has been allowed in town? And here, we're sitting, saying no to this. So, I'm just looking for some precedent, I guess. And I, that was on, in the 100 block of South Vasa.
So, Chair, as you kind of mentioned earlier, sometimes these things just sort of happened, and some of them also do meet that criteria under Minnesota statute for populations served. So, instances such as Matthew House with the chemical dependency, group homes that are serving intellectually disabled adults or physically disabled adults, those are the kinds of things that are allowed under the Minnesota statute in any residential zone, based on the number of people that are served. So, that was the first avenue that was researched. And as she just stated, they aren't a care facility, and so that's why this stipulation with the Minnesota statute does not unfortunately apply.
Has the city attorney been asked to find a loophole in this? I mean, like, has this gone to Ralph?
Yes. I summarized basically the six weeks of research and conversations, and sent this to Ralph, asking if there was any other option, or if the amending the zoning ordinance was essentially the only way forward, and that is what he agreed, based on the information that was presented to him.
So, I think the best thing for us to do is to send it to the council, not yea or nay, but just to move that process ahead, so they can deal with it instead of holding off for another month. I think if, what would we put it back, we would talk about it even tonight, it put us back in our, in the next meeting, is that right? Am I not mistaken?
Yeah. And that puts us at the end of August.
So, I think, I mean, if we can move this right onto the council, we've done this before about, you know, approve it, we don't disapprove it, we just want to move it ahead, kind of kick the can on the road, but not, you know, because we don't want to deal with it, just because of the time, you know, heal some time, because it'll go on the council's agenda on Monday night, I'm sure.
I guess, and maybe, I'm comfortable, and I don't know what the rest of the commission is, is saying, we as a planning commission don't have an issue with the proposed use. But I do think, like, I do think some, some way, and that's the trick, is legally, we have to find a way to notify these neighbors to have them have a say. And if we're not able to do a variance or a conditional use, or how can we legally put the notice out there? And then, we've got a timeline for that, and here we sit, we're back in September, October.
Correct. So, this would be amending the zoning ordinance, and so there is a process for that. It could be council-initiated, but it still doesn't solve the ultimate need for that process to go forward. And at this time, staff do not have any proposed ordinance text. The intention was to come to this meeting for the authorization to research that topic, since, again, it is amending the entire zoning code, so you would be authorizing not only this use, but any other potential use. And so, it would be really important to just think really carefully about what that looks like and the process that would be involved.
So, is there any way the applicant could look at doing the minimum to become quote-unquote "a care facility" or a nonprofit 501(c)(3) that would be giving enough care? To me, it almost seems like it would be easier for them to change their approach than for us to rewrite the whole city code.
That has been tried.
That has been what?
That has been tried. That was one of the other avenues that we tried to investigate, what that licensed care facility was. And as the applicant says, it does involve some type of, you know, nursing and care that essentially would just not suit their operating budget, or even really be appropriate for the proposal. So, there has been many rabbit holes that we have gone down in order to try to find a way to do this under the current, both city code and state as well.
So, at this time, city staff is asking for approval to further research this?
Correct, and to come to the next meeting with a draft text.
But then, that puts us at a draft, and then, a public hearing in September, and then council in October, and then it has to be published. I mean, we're looking at November, December.
October, November, I think, is what we had put in the email.
Does that even serve your guys' purpose, or at that point, is it just a joke?
On September 4th, our purchase agreement's over. So, I mean, we can't, we can't expect Children's Corner to hang on to the property for us, so...
Would there be a way to set it up as a daycare center in the interim?
I mean, there's overnight daycare, there's overnight, is it, can it be an overnight care facility? I'm just trying to come up with a way. Our hands, like, we want to help you, but we are also functioning under the rules of what we're allowed to do, and so our hands become kind of tied too, so it's not that I don't, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I don't think anyone's against this, but how we can legally help you.
I think we also have to be a little bit cognizant of wanting to help and being fully supportive of this type of housing in our community, because it is absolutely needed. And at the same time, making sure that we, as a council, are not stepping outside of our bounds of giving advice to applicants about how they can skirt the ordinances and the laws, because that is, that's going to bite us in the butt eventually. Because what if next time, it's something before us that we don't agree with, and then we won't give our two cents about it? I think we're putting ourselves in a bad position there.
Okay. That's a good point.
You said something, I believe, in your presentation about parking. Somebody did, if I remember correctly. So, it's certainly an issue that wouldn't, wouldn't be an issue with a daycare center for parking. There's certainly the movement of having cars coming and going as kids are being dropped off and picked up, but there isn't permanent or long-term parking issues where on residential street, if you have...
Well, right now, you can park how many vehicles at the house, and then there's another garage, you can put that in front of that, right? So, is there, how many parking spots is there? Say there's four? Four, nine, two...
So, is this the baby corner location?
Are you...
Is this a baby corner location, or the children's corner location?
So, this is where the daycare facility was, right?
Wait, but aren't they side by side? Isn't there two buildings there, with a garage in between them?
The garage is beside, so there's the, like, the house, and then there's the...
We might be getting ahead of ourselves even on...
Because there's another children's corner, or was over on Springon.
Right. A different one.
This is the one in Everett.
So, is this use, I guess, question for staff, is this use approved or able to be done in any residential zoning, or just not the one this property is in? Just so I have some understanding, I guess.
So, it would be anywhere that multiple-family dwelling would be allowed.
Then it would be okay.
Mm-hmm. So, it's the single-family issue.
So, this is zone R1?
Correct.
Okay. So, the fact, if this was in an R2 or an R4, it'd be fine, or just an R4?
R4.
Okay.
And with respect to the question about parking, so the current thinking of staff and city discussions was that such a use would be allowed only as a conditional use permit, in orders so that this and future uses, neighbors would be able to be notified that such a use was being there, and being able to put conditions on it, such as parking. You know, I think this particular building has six to eight bedrooms that were being looked at. So, that was just an illustrative example, as for, you know, why a conditional use permit would be sort of the current thinking of how we would approach this, is this is only an ordinance amendment.
Do you guys want to say anything else?
Shaun Sullivan, 1003 North Vine Street. I understand the kind of parameters you guys have to operate under, and I appreciate that. If, you know, and you understand our constraints here with the timing of the real estate market. If we're unable to proceed with this, I would encourage the Planning Commission to find a way for future things like this to expedite that process, because there is a huge need for this in the community, and there's people that really need to be served. So, that's really what we're looking to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming tonight. Good luck.
So, I don't, am I clear why the conditional use permit wouldn't be the route to take? Make it a zone 4 or R4?
You can't just spot zone...
You can't make an island.
Well, the conditional use would be, they're allowed to use it with R4 restrictions, but it's still an R1. That would be the condition?
There's no current conditional use, conditional use permit option under the R1 zoning. So, it needs to be authorized as a conditional use in the zoning ordinance in order to apply for a conditional use permit. Does that make sense?
So, I guess I would be comfortable with staff moving forward to look at that change to the ordinance, but I don't know that we should be changing the whole ordinance, but just changing this part of it. I don't know that looking at that whole ordinance right now makes sense. I think we should get through some of our other ordinance changes, but just, I mean, we, excuse me, added spot wording before, you know what I mean, without redoing the whole thing, but if we could just add some spot wording on this and research that, I would be comfortable with that.
And maybe researching, how are other cities doing it? Is it always done in R4? Are there, are they changing ordinances? Are they just saying, no, you need to buy in a different zoning? I guess I would be curious, because I, if not for this project, it's going to come up.
It's going to come up, right.
It's a need our community has, so...
Right.
Maybe if we, and I know that doesn't help this project...
I know.
Obviously, but it can help long-term. So, do we need a vote on...
I don't know that we need a vote, do we? It's not really a council action? I don't know that we need a...
Correct. So, the intent, at least for me as a staff planner, is that the commission essentially authorizes what, you know, I research, and that it is something that the commission feels should be explored, or has a need for, as opposed to staff, you know, necessarily being presumptuous and bringing something forward. So, I myself would appreciate, just as a procedural...
I'll make a motion to ask staff to look at inserting, go ahead.
No, you keep going.
Oh, okay. To look at inserting wording into our zoning ordinances for residential districts that would attempt to address situations like this one that has come up, and also, in that recommend, in that process of research, to look at how other cities are handling zoning issues in matters that are similar to this. Is that accomplished? Go ahead.
Can I just make one, one final comment on this? And while the applicants are still here, so, I mean, I think what you've seen from the Planning Commission tonight is that there is, there's definitely a need for this sort of thing in the community, and they're behind this project, just hands are tied. We also have a council member in the audience tonight, and I'm wondering if maybe, Brent, you would be willing to speak on behalf of your role as a council member, if the political will could be there? Because this is, that's what we've talked about with the mayor, is, yeah, the timing isn't great, but if the political will is there, this project will probably go forward. And I understand it's a complete risk on your behalf to make an offer on a building, but I think what you're seeing is a city that is willing to work with you, as long as we can hit the timelines we need to hit.
Right. And I would agree with that. I think the biggest unknown, from our perspective as a planning commission, and I don't want to speak for the council, but this is going to have to go to a public notification. So, if the neighborhood comes back with huge issues, that's something that we're going to have to take into account as a planning commission too. And so, just so that's fully out there, that if this comes back with, and there might be conditions, if it's a condition, condition that we can put parking things, it might, it might have things in it that you guys aren't foreseeing that we'll put on the conditional use permit too, if that's how it goes. So, I guess these are unknowns that... that we can't answer for you tonight. And we're sorry. So I guess I, my motion's out there. If that's an acceptable motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any other discussion? If not, all those, go ahead.
Do we need something in, in the wording of that motion to authorize, or maybe we don't, but to authorize the investigate, to include in the investigation, the city attorney and other people that would be able to speak into specific aspects of it, so we've got a complete package to address rather than keep doing this?
So then...
Saying, oh, well, we never thought of, we need to add to that, can...
In your research, you would generally consult with Laurel, I would assume?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So we don't need to add that to the motion, I guess, is my question.
Can I make one other comment along those lines? Again, this is the attorney in me. This is a cause that we are all behind, and we agree our city wants. I think we need to be cautious again about what we're asking city staff to research because traditionally, if this was an applicant that's not a nonprofit, they would need to go do their own legwork on this. They would need to get their own attorney, and they would need to present to the council, here's what we want to do.
Right.
So I think that the, when we say we approve staff going ahead to research this...
It's more researching the use than it is this application?
Researching the use in general of how this can happen to help our community, not this applicant sitting here, even though I personally am in the support of this.
Right.
I think we need to be cautious about that.
I agree.
Because otherwise, you're going to have, we're going to have eventually other organizations asking us to do their legwork.
Right.
For them, and we're going to be caught in a bad situation.
Is everyone on the same page on that? Does that make sense with you?
And if it would be helpful, I did propose a motion language that may be helpful, which is authorize staff to research and propose a zoning text ordinance update to accommodate group homes, which do not meet the definition of a state-licensed residential facility, which I think perhaps addresses the commissioner's concerns.
I agree. Thank you.
And I'll amend things to, to match that.
And then I'll, I'll second with that.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? Okay. Thank you, guys, for coming. We will move on to Bill, I would assume, and the RTC update. That's your plan?
Did you get my request to co-host Bill?
I, I did. I'm just trying to make sure that it works. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Bill Hickey with Cabinet Design Group. We're leading the consultant team working on the master plan for the Regional Treatment Center. We thought tonight we'd give you a brief, sort of summary and, and status on the document as it's coming together here in its, in its final days. And we will be working with staff, of course, to finalize it, but if you have any questions or, or discussion, it would be easy to, to go through tonight. What I want to do is just jump to the document and just walk through some excerpts. Can, can, did that come through, Claire?
Yes, it did.
Good. It's a bit of an unusual study in that it is, is not a traditional master plan in, in some regards. Been a lot of interesting discussion with the advisory group and with, with others in terms of, if you're, if a master plan, and you hear the word, and you think, and you know us as planning commission, you think new development and changes and guiding future use. We're sort of going to guide future use, but a large aspect of that is stewardship in this case. For instance, the, the government-centered property will stay government-centered. The park will stay park. So a lot of the, the thinking is, how do we continue to provide an appropriate setting and leverage that just tremendous resource that the RTC provides? Clearly, there's some development along the edges and, and that is, is encouraging and is of, of interest to us. I was sitting in through some of your earlier discussion, and it was very informative to, to hear about the adjacent housing development. Another aspect of this process was working with the group. It was very clear that master plan, yes, but also for it to be seen as viable, but the, the master plan had to also consider feasible reuses. So there's a, a portion of the study that does look at that and what the, the area and the demographics and the market can support for various reuses. The, the short answer to that is, is the principal use anticipated would be housing. And so many of the, the, the comments that you might have heard relate to that. But we wanted to start tonight by just talking about that, that idea of stewardship. As you know, the, the parcel, the campus is less than it once was. The modern property lines shown here have carved it up into several ownerships. There are existing complications, some of, some of them unusual in that, for instance, part of the original campus extends outside the city limits. So the, the master plan adopted by the, the city eventually will contain advice or suggestion, but not necessarily carry the same weight for those parcels outside the city as, as things inside the city limits. Fortunately, that's principally the historic cemetery, shown here by grammatically. It's actually quite a ways north. The master plan will recommend improving access to our visitors who come to the site. There is a need to have perhaps interpretation and an appropriate parking, all those sorts of things. Recognizing, recognition, excuse me, that many of the visitors might be elderly these days, and the, the, the sort of, the field road approach may need some consideration. Again, that's outside the city's jurisdiction, but you'll see references like that in the master plan that refer to that. For the more purposes of, of the, the master plan, then, many of the traditional thought, filters, concepts are, are still evaluated. It's a very striking building, as you know, but a big part of it, sort of the majesty of that, that building is its setting. The, the, the park setting and the vista as you come from downtown and, and looking up the hill and, and the sweep of the building all are, are very important. There are also some very important orientation points that we will be looking at in terms of formulating. One of, one of the difficulties of this site now in present day is the, the nature of, of traffic and circulation changes a little bit there. As you leave the, the single-family residential area, it becomes more of a, not a freeway character, but, but speeds pick up, buildings get larger, there's a, there's a change in, in the texture of the urban traffic. So we think, we're marking some of the gateways, creating that, that pause and capitalizing on the, on the, the RTC's presence are going to be important. That majesty of it extends to establishing what we've called view sheds. I think you're familiar with the term. The, the pride mound, of course, being uphill through the park, the castle on the hill look, but also it's the view out so that the eventually reused, revitalized RTC looks out into an appropriate setting that continues to, to support its, its historic nature. The adjacent smaller, much smaller historic buildings that have been redeveloped are, are an important part of the setting. There's aspects of that that are somewhat inevitable in terms of parking and things like that, but from a master planning perspective, we would see those obviously are appropriate and encouraged uses, but not seeking an effort to seek out substantial development, additional development, just sticking to the historic properties essentially. We do also recognize what we've loaded in this drawing, the tertiary view shed, with the industrial and, and support facilities removed from the inside of the view from the north side of the RTC. That's really remarkable. I hope you all had a chance to stand there and see the sweep of the building as it, as it comes around. New work in the building, revitalizing the building will necessarily include its own parking or other support things, first stairs, all the things that come with that sort of thing. But we feel that those can be accommodated in ways that maintain that, that sweep and continue to give you the sense of, of, of just that remarkable building as, as you come through there. So there, there'll be references to, to those sorts of things as you come through. The building itself, regardless of use, there are, are some things that we feel should be established. We, we believe the, the original main entry sequence should be restored, allowing for modern accessibility, but the, or the former, I should say, port cochere, the grand drop-off entry was an important part of that original building, the original tower building, and, and that should be reestablished. And it would actually have an equally valid function today for, for visitors to the building. There is also an appropriate space there now for transit drop-off, whether it's a tour bus for some of the history tourists that come to visit buildings like the RTC, or for just perhaps a resident mass, mass transit sort of thing. There's opportunities there to, to do what is going to be needed. There will need to be some surgical removals. As you can imagine, over the life of the building, there's been many, many improvements, some are more helpful than others. But a bit of pruning, and then there will need to be, in concert with eventual reuse plan, regardless of what the, the use ends up to be, there will be some things, life safety for fire in particular, obviously exit ways were, were something not featured in the, in the previous life of the building. So those, those will be improved, but those are minor and can be installed in entirely, in keeping with the historic integrity of the building and really would support it. There's an opportunity with the small memorial building, the little cottage there that sits behind, a number of opportunities there have been discussed, everything from a, a management office to an interpretive sort of welcome center for visitors, again, coming to see the, the building, but not necessarily giving everyone free access through. So it's, it's a great little resource. It sometimes gets, gets forgotten, but there's a, a, an opportunity there. In the, the body of the report, we recognize that there's, there's an audience for this report beyond yourselves and, and the advisory committee and folks who do know the building. So there will be history, there will be a discussion of, of how the building came to be and, and what it is made of and such. We've also gone through the building. I, I personally have been in every accessible room of the building. And so we have commentary about the, the condition of the building, and, and we really want to emphasize the building's in, in very good condition. It absolutely needs some work. It's got some issues from being mothballed. It's got a bit of a roof problem in one area, and it has other grating issues, but nothing that is at all in, in a, or it's jeopardizing any potential reuse. And we will then continue on for, again, for any reuse, how do you bring people to the site? How do you deal with people on the site? There's been a lot of interest expressed in non-vehicular, non-motorized, I should say, integration to the site, giving people an ability to walk around the building and not walk in streets and, and things like that. Certainly bike, and traffic, both recreational or potentially commuting, will be a factor. So we'll, we'll be looking at how to install and where appropriately to install those sorts of amenities. The, the, the reus I've mentioned will be in, in essentially a very large appendix, going through market area and, and thinking about what, what, what reuses can be supported in, in the frames, files, market area, where, where market trends are. There were some very interesting and intriguing suggestions that came from the advisory group that have not been seen as viable due to very macro-scale changes, things like the insurance industry and the way that they treat PTSD treatments. That was, I really hope was this could continue to be that place of healing that it, that it has been. But bound to the, the reality of, of that market there, there's, there's been a, a bit of an effort just to filter out things that will, will not be, be successful for, for those reasons. And then I don't know if, if you're familiar, but we do in, in this reuse appendix, we'll have an assessment of how, how each of the, the building components can potentially be reused and, and what, what form or what layouts those might take. Not designs by any means, but just illustrative concepts. Those are the, the, the general outlines of the master plan. At this point, I mean, you've been at this for a while, and I want to just throw it open to you all if you have questions or comments, or if staff has questions or comments.
Bill, it's Laurel. Thank you for working with us. It's been a pleasure to be on the, on the group with you and your hard work. One, I know we're on a timeline issue. With this not having gone to council yet for comment for any revisions and things like that, how is that process going to happen and still meet the timeline?
The timeline, we, we are finishing up by the end of the month. The council action is scheduled, I believe, for the 16th. The terms of the grant were that the work needed to be finished by the end of the month and, and Michael's on, on the call here too and he can comment more, more authoritatively, but we should, we should be okay on that. As I said, the, the work will be done at the end of the month here and the document will be in city hands. And so the council, adaption, adoption of it will follow. If the council has changes that they request, those are essentially on us, not a problem and we'll follow up with those, but they're, they're outside the, the payment arrangements of the grant, as I understand it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Can we get a written copy? I, I don't know, maybe my vision just is really, really bad and I shouldn't drive myself home, but I couldn't read any of that on the screen. Can we get a written copy of the draft emailed to us?
Well, I'm sorry, yes. Now, these are just excerpts from the draft, so what we can do is issue the full draft, if you prefer.
Right, yeah. If we could have that emailed out to us, that would be great. I mean, and if that's something where if this is due this week, I mean, if people get that in the next day or two, can people feel free to comment, email you with a comment if they see something or of that nature?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll distribute it through Claire and probably comments back through her would be easiest, just to, to make sure we're getting them through, but that's not a problem.
I'm glad I'm not the only one that couldn't read this because I saw nodding. Is there anything else from the commission other than getting us out a written draft? Is there anything else you're looking specifically from the planning commission on this or is this just so we're aware or is there anything you need for your process, Bill?
No, we wanted to give you an opportunity to, to be updated on, on where we're at and what is going to be incorporated in the, in the report and, and just keep, keep moving that forward.
Okay.
Would this be public information at this point or?
Is this public information at this point? If a.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If, if a draft gets sent out, then yeah, at that point it's public.
This one that goes to us, it becomes public.
I, to me, I, I don't know how to give comments if I can't read it, I guess. That, that's the hardest thing.
Well, this is not, you're not going to see nothing more that's been out in the public. There's nothing going to change. It's just putting different things together in this, in this plan. I mean, it's, there's no information and it's not been out in the public in the last 10 years. So I mean, it's not like it's.
Right, and it's not like we're sending it to the journal or something like that. So, yeah. If we could get a draft and then so people can get comments in the next day or two, I would assume that would be helpful, if there are any.
We will turn on that.
Thank you for your time tonight and sorry that you sat here for so long waiting to give your presentation.
Not at all, no. As I, as I mentioned, it was helpful and of interest to hear what the neighbors are up to.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. We will move on if there are any upcoming applications. Karen?
Is this the time to make a joke that there's six applications again next month? No.
Jeff better be planning on being here.
No, we actually have received no applications until Friday. As mentioned, there may be the final plat for the preliminary plat that we just walked through for Campus View Estates. Also wondering if the HRE plat may also come through for final plat approval by the end of the month here. There may be one city initiated rezone cleanup, but that would be just kind of short and sweet. So those are the only applications for August that we're aware of at this time.
Okay. Any, normal business, any other city planner update? You're doing a great job, by the way. For two meetings, it's a lot. Any city council update? Okay. Do we have a motion? Do you need a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
We're out of here.